For the flag salute, please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. It is a special meeting, so we need a motion to open the meeting.
I'll make that.
Go ahead, Barbara.
No, you've been out. You can make it. Go right ahead.
I'll make that motion.
Open the meeting.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. It's open. Okay, so first up tonight is an application for a special use permit, ACP. And just ask if, Scott, is there anything open that you need to look at for this one?
No.
Okay. And Liz, did you want to?
This is a renewal. This applicant has been before us several times for an extension of their existing, used to be called a conditional use. It's now called a special use under our code, but the effect is the same. The extensions do not require a public hearing. It is a type two action under seeker. The purpose of requiring renewals is to provide a board to just as a check-in to make sure that the applicant is complying with the terms and conditions of their site plan. The board has a choice. They can either choose to extend for another five years as they have done customarily, or if you're comfortable with the applicant having a no, no, no end date.
Anything you wanted to say?
Ms. Cassidy pretty much covered it. I was just going to add that we aren't asking, the shopping center has been operating under the permit, fully operational, and we're not proposing any changes or modifications, so we are simply asking for the renewal.
And I should have asked if you don't mind just stating your name.
Patrick Loftus, appearing for Ira Emanuel, who is the attorney of record for the applicant, ACP Monroe Associates.
And spell your last name.
L O F T U S.
Okay, so really, it's, it's, it's all it is. It's the, I think it was called the old Kmart shopping center at one point.
Correct.
Get this up. You know? So it's really just a renewal. We could do five years or extended further. I like the idea of five years. Just because the planning board changes, it puts eyes back on. You have to keep the landscaping in perpetuity and things like that. Can't tell if landscaping is in perpetuity, so we want to put that as a condition.
And that's been a condition.
In the, on the site plan problem.
Any renewal is clear on that.
Because there's been some issues with like the parking lot there and stuff like that, you know what I mean? And like, you know, in the back where they had the, where the loading section was, where they had to put, you know, the fence around it and everything.
Right. Yes.
Right, this is what we're talking about, the whole area right there, the whole Kmart shop, right? Like all that stuff, right?
Not the shop, right?
No, 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 I mean McDonald's, Stop &amp; Shop, the whole.
Star-Lager all the way.
Like, it's the whole thing, right?
It's the whole thing.
Like, the pizza place, all that, right?
Everything there.
Subway, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because like in the back, remember?
Since that time.
Yeah, yeah. A few years back, remember, they had the loading dock that didn't have a fence around it and people could just drive straight down over it, you know what I mean? So like, those things I think are why we should have it every for five, five years.
But then, what you're talking about has been fixed, just so I'm clear.
What's that?
What you're talking about has been resolved.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. But like, it was just issues like that, that were, you know, a reason to continue what you do every five years.
So, anybody on the board?
No, I agree with five years, but also, you know, if you drive back there, all our facilities that come before us today, all their dumpsters, everything is enclosed, everything is out of sight. I mean, you drive down there, drive into the back, go around to the ATM at Chase. You see open dumpsters, you see the turkey vultures, you see now a lot of seagulls all pecking at the food or whatever garbage is in there. I think a condition of the renewal is, that has to be cleaned up.
Have you been, like, are you seeing, you saw this recently, Joe?
Yes.
It's always like that. Yeah, there's no enclosures.
It's been that way for years.
Dumpsters back there, that's it. Right behind the building, so like, literally, it just sits right there.
Been that way for years.
So what I would say is that, so that the trash on site is a property maintenance issue?
Yep.
Certainly is.
For the building department, certainly out, and obviously, they have to maintain their special permit and they have to continue to keep the site clean of trash and debris. We'll certainly note that for the record.
Why are there no enclosures on that one?
Probably its age. The dumpster enclosures, I believe, is relatively recent. I want to say 2017, don't quote me on that. But I want to say that the change to the dumpster provision, so they would be a pre-existing nonconformity because they were approved when they were approved prior to that being an issue.
I agree with all, I agree with all that.
Try to keep it clean without the enclosure.
Well, well, they're, it, they should still have lidded, lidded dumpsters, so. If you could just spread the word to the tenants to keep their trash under control.
Some of the, not only the responsibility of the tenants.
No, no, we should refer to the building department.
It's the owner. It's the owner. You're representing the owner, sir.
Understood.
Okay? As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, I'm ready to reduce it from five years to one year to make sure it's done.
Well, we can condition it, put it through the building department, too. They can, and they'll send, they'll send enforcement, code enforcement over.
But again, it's.
That can happen much sooner.
It's the owner's responsibility.
Yeah, we absolutely will stay in touch with the building department. I'm, I'm, I'm going to have, I'm going to speak to the owner tomorrow, and I will let him know that this is an issue.
So.
So we need a motion to.
Five years?
Make a five, right.
Five years, yeah. I mean, are you okay with that, Joe?
Most of our applicants are five years.
Yeah, so we just need a motion for.
With the, with the conditions we discussed, so.
I'll make the motion for five years with the condition.
Of the building department.
We discussed, yes.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Fifty-nine Gilbert. No show? Nobody for fifty-nine Gilbert? Okay. It's all right. Earlier night. One twenty-three, one twenty-five Elm Street. Mike Morganti.
Evening, sir.
Evening, everyone.
For the record, Michael Morganti, project engineer.
Okay. Esther, was your plan is done on this? Okay. Mike, just a couple of questions, and then if.
Sure.
Scott, if you have anything too, you can, you know, I'll come back to you in a second.
Yeah, come back to me.
We were talking at one point about, I think you had said, or Leepa said, somebody said that the county was okay with the existing fence.
Mr. Chair, I was handed earlier this evening a draft license agreement. I'm advised, the attorney in the county attorney's office that is working on it, I will call her in, I will try to call her tomorrow, if not Wednesday.
All right, so we don't have anything at the moment?
Well, I have a draft, which is an excellent start, but I would like to, I'd like to speak with Ms. Mittler directly so that I can understand the county, confirm the county's position. I'm sure it's fine, but I do want to just speak with them directly, so I will take care of that.
Okay. And this is coordinated with the ZBA, this one?
This is a, so, right now, it is a coordinated review because the applicant does need a handful of variances, and I apologize, I feel wrong, I'm open on my computer. And so they have already been to the ZBA. The ZBA has had an initial discussion, but because it's a court, because it is a coordinated review, they have said, come back to us when the planning board has finished their seeker. So there are two ways to finish their seeker. One would be a determination that all, based on all the materials submitted by the applicant, that a negative declaration, i.e. there is no adverse impact that isn't mitigated by the project. Or two, a, if we adopt a positive deck, unlikely, but if we adopted a positive declaration of finding statement. So those are the two ways to finish seeker. So we're working toward that now.
Anything on your comments, Scott?
So we do have a comment letter that was prepared by Dave Higgins, dated November, sorry, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. It appears that there is thirteen comments. I can go through them if you would like. I have not prepared this letter, so.
Yes, and just so everyone knows, Dave had a death in the family, so this is a quick substitution. Scott filling in, so he's catching up in real time.
So, he notes, as noted in the bulk table, there's the following variances required. Motor vehicle shop within two hundred feet of a recreation area, lot size, front yard setback, rear yard setback, increasing non-conforming bulk, section two hundred dash sixty-four A B, storage of vehicles with any required yard, and storage of more than five licensed vehicles for a period of more than forty-eight hours. Comment number two, zoning code permits off-street parking to be located on a separate lot within five hundred feet of the subject property with an easement. The applicant has provided the parking, provided a parking license agreement. While we defer to the planning board to legal counsel for review of the license agreement, we would recommend that it includes a meet-and-bound description of the license area. Number three, as noted on the plan, it is proposed to consolidate tax lots two oh seven dash one dash two and two oh seven dash one dash three into a single lot. Consolidation of the lots by filing in the county clerk's office should be a condition of the approval granted by the planning board. Number four, previously proposed six-foot-high vinyl fence along the rear property line has been eliminated from the plan. The applicant advises that a recent site meeting with the county resulted in the county preferring to have the existing fence remain in lieu of the new fence, and that correspondence confirming the acceptability of the county is forthcoming. Number five, the submitted site plan includes landscaping plan prepared by Karen Aaron, licensed landscape architect. The proposed landscaping is limited to fourteen trubs and one tree in the front of the auto repair shop. Existing trees located between the property and the heritage trail have been shown on sheet two oh five. Planning board should review the adequacy of the proposed landscaping. Number six, plan proposes a chain-link fence with privacy slats along the western and eastern sides of the leased vehicle parking area. Plan proposes chain-link fence without privacy slats on the north and south sides. Planning board to review adequacy, the applicant should also consider providing screening of the parking area from Elm Street and adjacent lots. Number seven, applicant has provided an expanded part three EAF to address the items reviewed by the planning boards and identified in the part two EAF as moderate to large impacts. The planning board should consider the responses and make a determination of significance for secret. Once, number eight, the one-story frame garage is not included in any of the parking space calculations. Number nine, there's no source listed for the parking generation rate based, based on the storage area. Number ten, dumpster enclosure near the one-story frame office does not appear to be accessible. It is at the corner of a retaining wall that appears to be at least a foot off the ground. The other dumpster enclosure is oriented perpendicular to the building and only provides for about fifteen feet of maneuverability for trucks, revises needed. Number eleven, maneuvering around the building could be difficult with access lanes as narrow as fifteen feet in some places. Vehicle turning analysis should be provided. Number twelve, it should be verified that single, single parking space located on the east side of the single-story frame garage complies with the Village of Monroe Code, section two hundred dash forty-four L, adequate turnaround areas. All parking areas and driveways in all districts shall be designed so that vehicles can safely maneuver and turn around as necessary in order to enter the street front-first without backing out into the street. Number thirteen, in order, in order for the site to comply with Vill- Village Monroe Code, section two hundred dash fifty-one D, either a wall or a fence eight feet in height or a double row of evergreen staggered, eight foot on center with six feet distance between rows, initially six feet in height but capable of reaching ten feet in height, and in three years must be placed along the property line, joining lot two oh seven dash one dash five. The planning board may weigh this requirement if it deems that other architectural or landscaping treatment, including the retention of existing natural features, is more in the public interest and is more protective of the adjacent property. Plan shows four significant trees, diameter fourteen inches or greater, along the sou- the southern property line, that may provide screening. Planning board to advise on the adequate, adequate screen. That's all comments.
I'm assuming you have all those, right, Mike?
I do.
And Elizabeth, do you want to make?
Don't worry, it's not that scary. I just keep a running tally so you can see, Lee. Okay. I'm just going to go through the ones that remain outstanding. I did, as I mentioned earlier, I did receive correspondence, or at least a draft, a license agreement with respect to the encroachment onto the county's heritage trail. I'll take a look at that and also call county, the county attorney's office to confirm. Applicant to address landscaping and screening, which very much mirrors Mr. Higgins' earlier comments. We did get a county two thirty-nine letter back in July. There are a couple of advisory comments. The two, the two advisory comments that I was most concerned with were the stormwater hotspot, and I just want to make sure that's addressed. And then there was visual impacts with the rail trail. The newest plan, I just would seek clarity from the applicant. The newest plan shows twenty-four stacked sparking, stacked parking spaces in a space labeled outdoor storage of vehicles. The leased parking area is now labeled as vehicle storage area. I would just ask the applicant to clarify. I know we had a discussion essentially for a mini land bank so that you can show that you may not need the, we had discussed that last time. So I think you were, that was in response to our discussion, but if you could just clarify that a little bit. Again, landscaping plan, we had some discussions, and then architectural review, it is subject to architectural review, so we need to, need to complete that as well.
That's where you guys want to begin?
Wherever your, wherever your notebook is.
Number one?
I'll tell you what, let me just, can we bring up the site plan, and I'll just give a quick overview of the changes? Probably start with the parking.
Yeah.
Which is one of Liz's last comments, and we'll take a look at how that, the sites now moved out.
Mike, I think, just, next time you make a submission, if you make a change, just give me a little letter that says, we did this. Because I had, I was, I was like, looking around for what the changes were.
Give you a little narrative.
That would be very helpful.
Uh, yeah, if you want to go to sheet, um, what do we need to pause it? Um, actually, it's not that easy. Because I show what kind of parking.
You're in previous files. Terry, you're in previous files.
OP four. Or this.
Well, because the laser pointer doesn't work on the TV screen. No. That is it. That's it. It's got the stacked parking.
So if we can zoom in. So, some of the things the board wanted to see was kind of a general parking layout inside the actual rental storage area, which I did, which kind of like the four, um, quantity of space there. And then based on our last conversation in October, when I was here, there was a discussion of, um, the off-street parking, and that there may be conditions that if we ever lost the lease, we have to come back and take a look at the site that we hold because we have to have parking spaces. So that kind of prompted us to sharpen our pencils a bit and see what we could come up with on the site. Because we want to try not to make this site completely dependent upon, uh, that leased parking, if it makes sense for both the village and the act. So what we did was, we came back to this area here, reorganized the parking to get efficient spaces. One of the ways we wanted to do that was relocate the dumpster closure, that's one of the things, I'll touch on that in a second, but we just concluded this. So, we've organized parking spaces in this location here with the ZBA space. We actually were able to reconfigure this portion of the site here, which makes more sense because now we've actually got a twenty-four-foot-wide driveway aisle there, parking alongside of it, that allows us to get cars in and out from the garage itself, from the auto repair shop itself, and allows leased cars parked here, fully parked, and to be able to maneuver in and out as well. So we think overall, it's definitely improved in the design. We can scroll that way a little bit. You have a look at? This way? A little bit more. We've also left this little bit of area open. We left this little bit of area open over here, too, to allow, again, vehicles better circulation all around the site. So, um, taking a look at the parking calculations, we were also able to locate one parking space there, one parking space there as well. There were some comments on Dave's letter that I'll touch on in a second. But running through the calculations, we were able to, within maybe at the very least a space that been in Dave's letter, to accomplish the kind of say parking that was required for this particular project. Which again, I think is kind of a good thing for both the village and the.
Mike, just a quick question. You sharpened your pencil, you did this, you did that. Did our David see it yet?
He reviewed this, this plan.
He reviewed the new one?
That's where his notes are from.
Now.
This plan was just.
Question to you. You said you sharpened your pencil. By code, is there enough parking?
I'm going to go through that right here. So, yes, in my opinion, yes.
The answer is yes?
In my opinion, yes.
You have an?
If we are deficient, it would only be by maybe one space.
Okay.
And if we're deficient by one space, I would add that the ZBA application, we go to the ZBA. We're deficient on one particular parking space.
So I think where we had had the discussion at our last meeting was, we would land bank those, those spaces in the event you lost. The intention is still to have that leased property, is that correct?
We are absolutely going to pursue the lease, but if we lose the lease.
Right, correct. But you're not going to develop those spots.
You're land banking them.
I mean, look, it's already asphalt, so it's, it's less, it's less critical as to green versus not green. But I just want to make sure that that, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, the intent is to try to get everything we really actually need on site.
Across the street.
That vehicles area across the street is an abundance of, of storage. Okay, so you can scroll to the left a little bit and up, you should be able to get to the ball zone, being able to make sure you look at my thoughts around the parking. So one of the comments that Dave had was, there was no, I believe, reference to how I grabbed the parking storage. I spoke with Jim, I see Jim's up there, and the closest thing in the zoning code for the village that applies is a warehouse. So, it was his opinion in mind that utilize requirement for warehouse parking to utilize as well for the storage area. That's something the board's not sure about. I can go to I T E, and I can look at that as also, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be at least the same, potentially not less, than what we'll superstore here for. A warehouse, but that's in the zoning code, and, and Jim did concur that that would be the best applicable use for that. And I think one of the other comments, we can scroll down a little bit, too, like in this area right here, was, um, there was nothing, there was nothing allocated for the one-story frame garage. Again, I just, I discussed that with Jim, it was our opinion that it's a garage, I'm storing, I'm parking vehicles in there. So if anything, it should count towards parking spaces on the site. So there was no required parking calculation for the garage, it's already storing vehicles, it's a garage. It's not being utilized for anything else.
You're saying in the code, you couldn't find anything that fit the business itself as a, probably because the code says you can't have the parking, right?
Well, okay, so let's go back. The storage portion of it, the closest thing that met the definition of storage was a warehouse.
Right.
Storing materials in the warehouse, you're storing materials in the storage. So that seemed to be the most applicable parking requirement for the storage area. But the garage is just a garage, like it's in your house. It's got a bay door, we open it up, cars pull in, cars pull out. So we looked at that as just a garage, it's actually additional parking spaces, it's off-street parking inside the building. So, that is why we include a calculation for that particular garage.
So, just so you're aware, section two hundred dash forty-six A provides accessory parking as per the, the table that was cited by Mike, or as determined by the planning board upon consideration of all factors entering into the parking demands of each and every proposed use on the site, which is ever less, i.e. you have some discretion.
Right.
Okay.
How many spots are in the garage? So is it deep, is it deep, like, you know, like this?
Yeah, I want to take a look at the dimensions of that.
Or is it wide?
I knew you were going to ask that question, so. Let me see, if you could scroll down a little bit.
We're talking accessory garage, not the addition garage, right?
I'll point it out once I can just scroll down a little bit.
I was like, you're building a single room, getting two cars.
Yeah, it's forty-nine people, so you can get two cars. Eighteen foot twenty to call. And then what we did was, we showed one additional space here. Now, Dave's letter states that, if you look at the section of the code, you should be able to have a turnaround area so that you're pulling facing out onto Elm Street.
So from there, you'd have to back out onto Elm Street?
There's no question, so that space is in question. If it actually counts or not, that's the space that I'm telling you.
And the same with the garage then, too, right? Because you'd have to pull out of that garage the same way?
We would, but it's, I don't know how to answer that question. It's a garage, people are parking. I don't want to say that's a pre-existing nonconformal situation, it is, but.
Yeah, but like, so the, but the parking calculation, like you said, is, is that part of the, a legal spot is to not back out onto a road, right?
Correct. So I mean, the same would hold true for any spaces in the garage, there's no room to turn around if they set. So if we don't count those, then I'm falling short by one space on the site. So that's, that's what I was trying to.
So those three spots right there, you, if, if those got eliminated as what is, you're proposing, then you'll be one spot short. So then if you have those three, you'd be two over?
I think the only, I think the only one in question is this one. That, that one obviously does not meet the requirement.
Right.
And if there are, we're not counting the two right now that are on the side, that count.
Okay.
So if we are not allowed to count them, we fall one short. If you are allowed to count them.
You're up two extra.
One extra. So, um, so that's kind of where we are. So I mean, overall, though, we're able to carve out most of what we need on the site, which I think is really, hopefully, is the focus of this discussion as well.
So you're going to try to keep it all there and literally, and just use that as an accessory over there?
Use it as overflow, yeah.
And you're still renting the whole thing?
Well, whatever we have shown is the area that is required.
Well, whatever, yeah, how many spots is that on the other side?
Uh give us a roll down.
Twenty-four on the other side.
Twenty-four, right?
Is that garage gonna remain?
It'll be twenty-five. I think it's twenty-five.
Is that that garage? Is that gonna?
It's intended to remain a garage.
It's gonna remain a garage.
If we change the use, if we gotta change the use, we gotta come back.
Yeah, it's a very strange garage.
It is.
I wouldn't want to have to pull into that.
Yeah, but it's also probably a pretty old building. We're thinking about whether they pull facing out or backing out. I'm not sure.
And again, just to remind the board that the purpose of this exercise was to confirm whether or not we'd come even close to the parking. Um should that because that lease is is.
Without the accessory.
Without the without the across the street parking because it was a lease that was revocable effectively on ninety days. So what 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 happened if that situation were to occur?
Yeah.
So that's how the applicant that's this is how the applicant has chose to has chosen to address.
So Mike, the currently the spot that has all the cars in it, they're not going to be there anymore. That's what land bank would be.
You mean over here?
Yes.
No, there's still going to be one inside there. That's the area that's closest to the actual operation. They actually want to keep this area in there.
All right. So what's going across the street then?
That would be any overflow from toy parking and or vehicle storage area.
Okay.
But probably mostly vehicle storage area at this point because I can tell you, even though I've got all these spaces shown on the site, I highly doubt he doesn't have that many employees. And not that I was there when I saw. They have they have cars they need to store for working on them, but.
And a five day limit on the storage of the cars.
At the moment.
Five cars. Five cars.
That's what they're going for the variance for for the.
For five days.
Right. They're going to the ZBA for that though.
Yeah.
But they can't go to the CBA until we do seeker.
Yeah.
So that's the parking situation.
What were you gonna say about the dumpster?
Yeah, let's say a little bit of that. Um so I was out at the site a few times. Um I actually do believe that's actually a very, very good location for a dumpster because the dumpster has a CMU wall and it essentially acts as a retaining wall in itself. The greatest area, I mean, there's one confor, there's a next. This is actually a fairly flat area right there.
So Scott, Scott, can you read your comment, Dave's comment there on the dumpster?
Let's see. Dumpster enclosure near the one story frame office does not appear to be accessible. Is at the corner of a retaining wall that appears to be at least one foot off the ground. The other dumpster enclosure is oriented perpendicular to the building and only provides for about fifteen feet of maneuverability.
All right. So I see one. Where's the second one?
The second one is over here, but we should stay focused on this one.
Yeah, how you how's the how's the garbage truck gonna pick that up?
That's what he's.
This is a side loaded truck. We have to we have to work with sanitation to get a truck in there that can handle this. That's what we have to do. This is for every other property that's in the village as well.
Oh, well, they'll have to drive it. Well, yeah.
Drive it and back up. They roll it out, lift it, dump it.
Yeah, they have side loaded dumpsters, uh garbage trucks. So it's gonna have to be a side load. It can't be a front load.
I don't really have for dumpsters.
Physically have to roll it out. Physically have to roll it out.
Yeah.
That's just not operational.
It's an I mean, for us, it's an operational issue.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to make it work. But I can tell you that I, you know, again, I probably could have been a little clearer. I probably should have shown this kind of like, you see, this is an Asher Canadian lawyer. I probably should have had it come around for the size of the dumpster. That would have been a little bit clearer intentions. But this would actually be a CMU wall, would need an enclosure around the dumpster, in the dumpster face that direction. If I'm in a better spot, I might say I should put it. I would put it there, but I can tell you that's I stood I stared at this for hours and that was. I I could put it here, but I don't think you guys want it right up against the road, right? Even if it's even if it's got a CMU block around it, it looks pretty. I don't think we want a dumpster right up against the road. I can't get into this corner. I can't get into that corner. Can't access it. This this was the spot. The only thing I would move that is I can possibly do, I don't know if I could do it.
Of course, of course.
Is I might be able to squeeze a parking spot in there. If I put it against the building, it might have been a deal. If I flip the parking spot with dumpster, that would be the only thing I could think of.
Where's which which parking spot would you put? Where's the parking spot?
Anywhere you want.
Oh, you're saying.
If I if I put this here, here, or here, then I put a parking spot, then you just.
But isn't there a park? Isn't there a code? Like you can do a parallel spot. I don't I don't want the.
This is about this is about twenty-four feet right there. So I can't get another spot. We're gonna try.
Mike, why do you need I'm just and this is just me spitfire here. Why do you need two dumpsters?
Um we technically don't.
Because I'm just thinking, so your lowest spot with a one in the middle of it, next to the garage?
You're still.
No, no.
To the right.
Next to the garage, down, down, down.
To the right.
Down. Yep, that one. Put the dumpster there, back your truck in, back your truck out.
I'll lose another spot. I'm gonna lose two spots.
But again, we have a little bit of flex. I mean, again, I can't make the decision with the board for the board, but the board does have the option of saying, I'd rather have the dumpster.
Right, exactly.
There than this one isolated parking spot.
And then Mike, like you said, where the dumpster is up where you're proposing, make that a spot up there up against the building if you can.
But I don't know why you need if it's one site, I don't know why you need two.
Um but I'm gonna say this. Um if if the board, I I like that suggestion tremendously. Um remove this, place this over here, easily accessible. I'm now looking for a way to move for two spots.
Why can't you put the dumpster in the on the left side, in the bottom left there in the hashes?
Right here.
Yeah, at an angle.
Because the width of this dumpster, if I angle it like this, I can't get a truck in.
He can't come in and swoop in and back right out and.
There's cars parked.
Yeah, there's cars there.
Believe me, I tried. I don't even have eight feet.
Yeah, I got you.
This is and I don't want to.
Around people's cars. Yeah. Who the heck wants that? I would want it. I would want it isolated all by itself over there.
I think they go in and look for the twenty, look for the spots.
Or yeah, like you just said, how about? Yeah, how about that, Mike? Switch the two spots right there.
There is no waiver requirement of your parking.
I know that.
So then the other one that's semi-illegal, put it there. That spot. Put it there.
Then we can do what we want to do after that.
No, so timeout. There are two there are two distinct issues.
Right.
The issue that the applicant is going to the zoning board of appeals for is the special permit use requirement that the limitation on how long cars can be parked overnight. That is one discrete issue separate and apart from the total number of parking spaces on the site. What the applicant is saying is I have X number of spaces on the site to accomplish a dumpster, I lose a spot. What I'm what I'm telling you is section two hundred dash forty-six of the code, right, says or as the planning board determines.
Right.
Right? So if you believe that the applicant's parking math is reasonable and essentially you have that discretion to see, the question ultimately comes for this board, what would you rather have, knowing that they do have the alternate parking? Would you rather that spot be a dumpster or do you rather that spot be a parking space? And sometimes I have had boards where they absolutely want the parking space and others that are like, it's an extra parking space. We don't need it.
Considering we have that overflow parking across the street too.
No, I get it. What are what are the variances you're you're going to to the planning to the zoning board for?
Uh I have it. So it's.
I know there I know.
Two hundred fifty-one N motor vehicle shop within two hundred feet of a recreation, front yard setback, uh two hundred and sixty-four A B increase of non-conforming bulk. So that that one may have disappeared. Lot, no, that one didn't disappear.
No.
Lot size rear setback and then um two hundred dash fifty-one O, which is the limitation on the the overnight parking of cars.
So then you required your. I don't think we are um.
So they don't need a waiver for you to say, okay, as what we just discussed, right? Now, if the ZBA says no to any of this, this this whole thing.
Well, that's why I say, why do that now?
Because we've done a coordinated review. The applicant is assuming the risk. We're going to do the review as how we want the site to be, how this planning board wants the site. We're gonna finish the seeker review as as we've done the site, and that's gonna be part of your discussion. We weigh the we weigh the location of the dumpster and find that this is the better alternative or whatever your analysis may be. Once we do that, then the ZBA can make their determination. He is running the absolute risk that the ZBA says no. And if they say no, this application as it currently stands.
I'm just not seeing the point of us making that decision now at this point anyway because if the ZBA says no, it's all going away.
But you have to make a secret determination.
No, no, I'm talking secret determination, I know.
So that's but that's what we would do is make a secret determination. So I think at this point, given the information, I I do need direction whether you'd rather have the parking space or the dumpster. What I would suggest is authorize my office tonight to start preparing the negative de- a negative declaration for review and discussion. He has a couple of minor homework items for next month, and then you can make not necessarily approve it because you don't have to approve simultaneously with the negative.
If you want to take the risk and do that, that's.
And if it if it pleases the board, if if we do put the dumpster there, remove that, blah, 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 I mean, the site plan is not finally approved by this board. We're gonna continue the work of this board.
Yeah, no, we totally get that. Yeah, yeah. I was just trying to save you the step is all I'm saying to to do that for.
They did go to the ZBA. The ZBA sent it back to to us, which is not procedurally wrong. There's two ways of doing it. They could have. But we did a coordinated review. So.
So is it more of the capacity of the dumpster that you need two? Can you make the one of them just bigger?
We can make we can eliminate this, this over here, and just lose a parking.
Well, when I when I'm saying, what what about the one over there to the right? That one right there? Can you make that bigger? Like, so what what size?
Oh, we could.
Well, that's what I mean. So then, like, why do you need the other one? Is it just a logistical thing or whatever, or is it capacity thing?
Ease of accessibility, that's it.
Okay, so then ease of accessibility is the fact that it's already two of them there. You know what I mean? Like, are you okay with one? You are okay with one. So then keep the spot.
It looks like you're trying to squeeze a lot to real little space.
Huh?
You still lose the spot because that's not in the spot over there.
Neither of those are a spot.
You can't count this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if it moves there, we lose two spots.
No, what I'm saying, but isn't there another one on the right side though, right? Isn't there a dumpster over here? Where's the other dumpster? Where's the other dumpster?
It's they're both right there. One's they're both one dark squares, right?
One's here, one's there.
Yeah, exactly. So can't you just use that one?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but you're not losing the spot because it's staying there.
I mean, so the comment was the comment from Dave was this, you know, he's not sure about the accessibility of that dumpster.
That one. Oh, okay.
Exactly, but they get a turning diagram.
That's a nice question. So it's technically illegal to back into the road, right? It wouldn't be considered a spot, correct? What you say before that, but it's okay to back it. Dunk.
So the truck would back into the spot into there? Cause you ever see them, they come in, they pull up, and then they back in?
Do the same thing then.
Well, yes, technically, but.
Locate this dumpster here, truck pulls in, pulls back, goes out.
Right. Oh, you go back now? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And how about the other one, the left side one? What would happen?
Oh, that's going away.
Get rid of it. If it wasn't though, what would have happened?
You'd have to back out.
That's the problematic piece.
I would have had to put to get a turning diagram to see if I can make a turn.
That that wasn't really a possibility anyway, quite frankly. If there's cars there, our concern is whacking into cars, it doesn't work anyway.
Yeah.
Quite frankly.
I just think it's straight and straight out.
Yeah, yeah. So really, it's just you want to move the two into one and give, you know, and waive the necessity for the give up the spot for the.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We look at the dumpster and give them the spots.
And it looks like you have plenty of space there to put a bigger cubic yard wise dumpster there.
Yeah.
So what I what I would suggest based on this discussion is if I may authorize me to prep that result, that negative deck.
Yeah.
I would have that negative deck prepared for our January work session. We could discuss the length. We could use that as a workshop to flush out anything else we needed. The applicant could do last minute adjustments and then theoretically, assuming we're all in the same place, we could take action at our regular meeting in January.
And where's it at with the county? You were saying something before, but I'm not sure we finished.
Um just as a reminder to the applicant to make sure we have uh comments on the county on the um the the county planning, uh two thirty-nine, because they did have some advisory comments.
We we prepared part three, yeah, to address those comments.
Okay, I'll do that.
They're in.
Before we go down. Yeah, okay. And then you're also they're gonna have any license.
I will speak to Stephanie, yes. I have the I have a draft. I just I have to speak with I have to speak with the county.
Okay. Um so we need um two things. One is a motion for the dumpsters to become one and to give up the parking space to allow them to do that. And second, to authorize Elizabeth's office to go ahead and draft a neg deck for discussion in January.
Right. So I'll make the motion to relocate the dumpster to.
The bottom one there, yeah. Is that is that a one?
I don't understand why we need a motion.
It is a one.
You don't, but it won't kill.
Jeff, I don't understand why we need.
It won't kill you.
I don't know why we need a motion.
The authorizer?
To put the two dumpsters together. I mean, that's part of their design.
Just yeah, but you're giving you're letting them give up a spot, which the planning board has ability to do.
I still can't see why the two dumpsters into one, the one on the right, and just leave it there.
That's what we're doing.
You're not giving up a spot then?
They are.
That one, that little.
No.
No, 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 no. Leave it right where it is.
Leave the dumpster there.
No, because it's 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 problematic there.
It's hard for a truck to get.
The truck can't get to that. And the truck can come all the way around.
Cutting off the width of the of the access road too.
And it's totally away from the residential area even too.
This this is this is way off the road. It's shielded from the county side with the trail, but it's seen.
Right.
Super easy to access, get in and out. Um it's in a good spot for actually, I mean, if I put it there, everything you can access, it's central there.
Okay, Mike, real quick, let's just.
Why didn't you do that in the first place, Joe?
Real quick, let's because.
Yeah, right.
Because eliminating a legal spot down there and then you're relying on the second with the garage and the one in the front of the garage that might not be legal. So now you're looking for two.
This worthless as well.
That's what I mean. That's what I'm saying. You're relying, you're 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 hoping that that could be, huh?
Losing two spots.
I know, that's what I mean. So if you put the dumpster in that illegal one up there in front of the garage, in front of the garage, and then you still have the one in the back there.
I'm okay with that. I'm gonna play my own reviewing engineer now. I'm gonna tell you that a garbage truck then has to pull in and back out onto.
Yeah, so you can't. So that's not accessible, right? Okay, okay.
Correct.
Well, listen, I see it all the time. It happens all the time. They do it. They pull up, they back in, and then they go out. And then, I mean, you see it all the time.
Has the discretion under its code to, within reason, modify.
Yeah, that's why we're doing a motion.
Yeah.
So so I think the the question then is, is the the motion to exercise its the board's discretion to eliminate one parking space as shown on the plan. That would be the that would be the motion. And that's pursuant to two hundred dash.
Well, you're yeah, you're gonna eliminate two.
You're gonna eliminate two.
One for the dumpster, the other one is just not.
Maybe it might count, might not.
But he doesn't need that one that he's he's two over now. He's eliminating one that doesn't count.
He's two over now if you count the building.
Yeah.
As two parking spots.
Like the the garage you talked about.
Right. Otherwise, he's too short.
So just the motion I just made is anybody can make the motion.
Okay, so does somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
To get the garage, get the back, get the back in, you can't count that either.
I don't know.
I don't think it counts.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so those are.
That's why.
To be safe, if I'm gonna be deficient of two parking.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
That's the safe.
And that's a risk you're willing to take on this right there.
Well, it's a risk, but it's also, I think, in the board's discretion to determine that it's as Liz was saying, that it's it's okay for us to do that, to put dumpster in a much safer location.
Yeah, yeah, I would rather.
That allows for refuse trucks to get.
So we're saying you can be two spaces shy if you put the dumpster there.
Okay.
Yes.
So it doesn't have to go to the ZBA for that. We can make that determination. Yeah, okay. I think we're all on the same page now, hopefully.
So somebody want to make the motion now that that the board exercises its.
Fred made it.
Yeah, I'm in motion.
Oh, Fred made it, right?
I need a second.
I need a second.
I will second.
Member Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
One other consideration for the board too, um, if there's a negative deck being considered in January, could we potentially think about scheduling a public hearing? Cause I think we have to have a public hearing with the planning board as well.
We do.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. And we should have a public hearing before we adopt the negative declaration. So.
Probably not, because you'd leave, I mean, you could, you mean the public meeting?
So what I would suggest if we're going to schedule, you could still authorize me and we can have the discussion subject to, to public hearing, that's fine. Um, I would like to have a revised plan. When's the submission date for January, Terry?
Twenty eighth.
I can do that. I can get that in.
Nothing like making you do it during.
Something to do for Christmas.
I'm gonna do that way before Christmas, Mr. Chairman. I don't think the change, the change is that much of a heavy lift here, so we should be okay.
I have no qualms with setting a public hearing so long as we have revised plans by the submission date.
Right, we could always pull back. I mean, that's, that's not a problem.
But you need the resolution. So the submission date's the thirtieth, so you actually have more time.
Oh, it's the thirtieth?
Yeah.
For January, okay.
So it does make sense to schedule then a public hearing for January. I will still, in the interim, start prepping it, um, for internal discussions.
Right.
And then you can.
Take comments and.
Take comments, yeah.
What that January date is?
Twenty eighth. But that way I can at least get.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Notice to, I can get notice and everything out.
We would discuss at the work session.
We would have discussions at the work session.
And it would be public, you're talking about the public hearing on the twenty eighth, right? Yeah.
And then the work session's on the night, right?
Thirteenth.
Yeah, thirteenth is the workshop.
So I've taken up enough time, but one last thing. You wanna just talk about landscaping real quick, cause that was the only other.
So hold on, before we, before we get there, can I have a motion to set the hearing so I don't forget to?
Yes.
That needs a motion.
We need a motion to, uh, set the public hearing for the twenty eighth of January.
I'll make that motion.
Member Heffenek, your second. And member Kelly, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Uh, you wanna just talk quickly about the landscape?
Yeah, so on the bottom of that plan, Terry, pick the last.
I mean, before.
Twenty eighth?
What for?
January, public hearing.
Your previous files.
When was the meeting for January? Workshop was the thirteenth. Meeting is what?
Twenty sixth, I think.
Twenty sixth is a Sunday. So it would happen to twenty eighth?
So the board's seen the landscaping that we prepared in these areas over here, right there, right there, most previously. Uh, one of Dave's comments was, um, for some consideration along the southern property line because the site borders, um, a residential neighborhood. Um, that particular property happens to be the same owner as the auto body shop. Um, so in this case, I don't think you would have an exception. To, um, avoid the, the landscaping by being potentially selling in future, we should probably talk about it. Some of the boards are driven by this site. Um, that corner of that property, we have some recent photos, very, very heavily vegetated, there's a lot of trees.
Yeah, point it out to them, Mike.
Uh, I need the, I need the full site plan to have people get that.
Oh, okay. Like to go back, yeah, so.
So this is the particular property, the question happens to be the same owner. You have, there's two things you can do there. You can take a look at the existing vegetations there. It's very, very, very heavily vegetated. Um, just take a drive by, you can see that's still heavily vegetated inside here. There is a chain link fence here. You could have privacy slats as well. Um, that's the pleasure of the board, um, that you think you'd wanna do there. I mean, if we put privacy slats in, it's belt and suspenders. Um, I do think there's quite a bit of existing vegetation. We can screen that area already. I do, I don't have a, it's saying eight foot fence though.
Six, uh, well, one comment is the previous proposed six foot high line of fence along the rear property.
Yeah, fence eighteen. You probably, probably four or six of those.
So currently, you're saying there's a, a four foot high, uh, chain link?
I believe it's a four or six. I'm not sure exactly which one, but it's one or the other. It's, it's here.
Right, so the only thing I think, Mike, that if somebody, if he sells the one property and somebody wants to clear that vegetation out, it's still, you know, then somebody might say, well, then he can plant what he wants. Yeah, but it's still on the owner here to have us, have it screened.
So we could, would you be okay with us, um, sliding the fence? I mean, that's an acceptable means of, uh, screening it. I mean, if I'm gonna put. We don't have enough room.
That's a residential over there, isn't it?
It is, yes. This is a residential. Correct. Residential property, it's residential, residential property.
Right, so.
I mean, I would be surprised if anybody moved in here, wanted to cut this down to locate this.
Oh, I wouldn't be surprised at all. I've seen.
Oh, okay. Then they're, then if they wanna look at it, they're gonna look at it.
Yeah.
We could put slats here and that would block the view. There's not enough room for a double row of cars. So it's really not even an option for us.
It's not enough room in order for you to have a car park there that you want.
What's the length? Go ahead, go ahead.
I said, they have a lot of cars. They, the matter's to have a lot of cars back there, so maybe lose a row of cars and give us a tree.
Well, of that corner of the property, cause, see, I hate chain link fences when it's, when it's trying to block a business from a, a residence. So a stockade fence would probably be a whole lot better. But what's the distance on the back point of the property to the street? Can you see it there or not?
I don't know if I have this mentioned, but I could proxy.
So you get.
One, that's five, six, seven feet. Uh, right, that's seven feet. Each one of those spaces is gonna be about eighteen or more, right? So that's forty, maybe another one, two, three spaces. Um, so sixty-four, maybe less sixty feet, cause this is an alley.
Yeah.
Maybe all sixty feet. Do you have that called?
Um, to me, I, I.
Sliding the fence. And then you push the snow up against them and it gets all gross and.
Yeah.
Falling out and everything. There's usually no maintenance with those.
If it's worth it, I mean, just take a look. I didn't even realize. It's already, it's on the fence, it's already part of the slats.
You can see.
Right. You can see the vegetation, the trees behind it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's probably, that's, that's at least a six foot fence. My answer would be eight foot.
Yeah, I just don't like the look of it and I don't like the, uh, and the slats break.
It's a weak six foot.
Yeah, there's usually like no maintenance on those. Once they do kinda start falling apart, they just leave them like that, you know? Yeah, and they're, yeah, very ugly.
So I think, I think you have to put it, you know.
Stockade?
Put a stockade fence. Cause then that's completely blocked. Then once, you know, since. Um, ooh, so that was just an interesting point that Mr. Boyd brought up. Since it's the same owner, you could think about doing a lot line. I mean, that could move all that vegetation into this property.
That's another way to do it.
Now it can't be cut down at all.
That's another way to do it.
Well, then that's a different application.
Sure.
Lot line.
If we relocated this lot line right here such that it didn't close these trees, now we've got all that existing vegetation on such a property. That vegetation could not be cut down anymore and it would act as permanent screening.
Just, you know, that that becomes a subdivision application.
Now, but beyond the fence, what's behind the fence low to keep that vision from going away? Cause the picture I just saw was just tall trees and all this, the, um, all the leaves are gone from there. So if you remove the fence, right, you're saying to remove the fence?
No, no, we'll leave the fence.
Yeah.
But I'm saying is.
To add the rows of vegetation that is.
Behind, oh, okay, okay.
To make it a part of the subject.
Love the lot line so we can take advantage of the vegetation for screening.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
And, and a lot that's left will still be.
Or ask the owner there to not go through that and just plant them.
I don't think it impacts this lot in terms of area or setback. So pretty sure that we'll go check it.
Wait, yeah, I guess.
So.
We're gonna park a spot out of it.
Going. Going back to our discussion, if you're going to do that, that amends the application. We would have to table a public hearing in. Just because we have to go through that process. So. Mike, Mike, what I would say is let us know by the thirtieth which path you plan on taking, because I can always pull back the notice. You know, we only have to notice it two weeks, it's ten days, but we'd be noticing it. Um, so let us know in your submission for the thirtieth, what plan you choose and then it will modify if, if they're gonna choose the lot line after commending, because it becomes a subdivision application under our subdivision code.
But you have a store, you have a, you have a, a one story framed garage in that lot, that if you move the lot line, it'll be on top of the lot line.
No, that one's a frame garage over here.
This is the other end of the property.
I just want to know, um, since it's the same owner, we could put a condition that says that vegetation can never be removed.
Well, you can't do that, cause if you sell.
It's to protect the person who would potentially buy the property. That's the only purpose I mean here. Again, if someone buys his property and they willingly cut that vegetation down and.
No, so I'm saying, what, what, so what would prevent, if that vegetation already existed, for instance, what, what's required, what we're talking about being required? If the person, uh, you know, on the other side, well, then you, then it's, you can't force them. That doesn't work either.
So effectively, they're, they're seeking the benefit of off-site, which is not impermissible. You can certainly say, hey, the adjoining property's full of trees, right?
Yeah.
So.
We can condition it, put notes that says, you know, it's to protect that home, that property, that person wants to take those trees down.
Makes sense, yeah.
That's their, that's their prerogative.
Right, but how you gonna, how you gonna make it so the current owner, let's just say, I know it's the same person, but that, they have to leave it there. You can't force, cause they're not before us. So if that, the current owner could cut them down.
Current owner is the owner of this.
I get that. But theoretically, he can cut them down. If he decides, you know what, I wanna use it for something, I wanna put a pool over there.
There's a, if there's a condition on that map that says that that's gotta remain and he wants to cut it down, he's gotta come back here.
No, but what? In other words, but it, but he's, it's its own lot and there's been no subdivision. So if there's no subdivision, you're gonna put a note on what?
I'm gonna place an, I'm gonna put an easement. I'm gonna put a landscaping easement on the plan. That easement's gonna encompass.
Oh, that's different. You would know better there.
All right.
That'll get filed in the county.
Right, right.
All right. Mike's gears are clearly grinding, um, and, and that's fine, which is great. I actually think it's great. I love problem solving. I think, I think for purposes of facilitating the discussion. Right now, before the applicant, um, the plan as currently before you is the subject of a public hearing on the twenty eighth. In the event he elects to do anything affecting the lot line, we would, he would, he needs to tell us that by the thirtieth. If he's going to do something that affects the lot line, we would then have to change the public hearing because it's now effectively the combined subdivision application.
And that includes an easement?
An easement would not.
So that's what he was just talking about.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't he have to have a new subdivision?
No, no, he wouldn't have to, not if you have an easement.
No, easement would not trigger a new subdivision.
And then you file that in the county and that's solved, to me, that solves the problem.
So, um, if you wanna, Mike, if you wanna chat, give my office a call, we can, we can chat, but I, I, again, just pick your path and that's between you and your client.
I think the easement's.
I think the easement's a great solution.
It keeps the vegetation, for sure. Um, I think it's the cleanest and easiest way out of this.
Okay, if he's willing to sign on, why not?
We'll check with him. We'll let you know that by the thirtieth, either way, but I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, just let us know what you're, okay. And I don't think we need to change the public hearing for landscaping.
Right.
Just make sure it's on your plans for your next submission.
If I don't stop now, I'm gonna get thrown out. I think that's all I got for one twenty-three.
All right, anything else, uh, with the board on that? Nothing? All right. So next is Choco Cheese.
Oh, you're not done yet. I was gonna say, Mike, you're supposed to run out of the room.
Okay, so this is to look, yeah, okay.
Yeah, eyebrows, no brows, lil' brows, high brows. Sir?
Let me have a second one. I wanna show it to you and your new good, their new neighbors.
So Mike, how close to, uh, accurate are these colors?
There's an actual photo. That's a photo, that's a photo of the site. What's, what's the rendering is actually the ornery. Everything else is an actual photograph.
The whole ornery is rendered, right?
Yeah, all the.
This looks good. It says offices right there. It's clear. It shows you what it is. I think that it says offices. You're not gonna walk in here on the bar and like think, thinking that you're.
Cause I think it looks nice. I, I, I like it. I like the look.
And again, this is only gonna be the actual door right here.
It's a color issue.
I know we brought a can of something.
Like it was the designer and the, it was like.
So I was just saying, uh, see this one? This is really close, but it almost, you almost lose the ornery of the building.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't see it. So maybe if they went a little darker on something.
That chart, white charcoal.
Well, that's what.
Something charcoal or something.
Which is.
Basically, this, this, this is, there's only one entrance type that they call the Choco Cheese, right? That's it right there. These are all just pre-existing doors that aren't gonna be used. Do you have any back, anybody except excesses building from the back as well? If someone parks back there or. You only access it from right here, right?
Yeah, for the school.
Sure, yeah, right, right.
I wanna give it to their neighbors. What's the roof line? Brown? What is that?
It took a charcoal, I think.
Public information, that's, that's all.
It still looks fake up there, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does look like, that looks a red ring. It looks a red ring as well.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm like, yeah, I'm like, that looks fake. How is this a picture of it? Cause that looks fake.
Three notes of flat, so.
Right, it just goes flat, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that looks good. I think it cleans it up. Right? It looks much better than the way it is right now. It looks like a normal business.
I hear lots of, poor Terry has to keep control of all of this.
Now, Terry just doesn't, anything says when you're done, let me know.
So Terry, this is where you write, discussions held regarding on it and that's what the minutes reflect, because you're all having like six different conversations.
I mean, I would just probably change the color, Mike.
Do we have samples, um, matching the rendering now? Is that matching the rendering? Remember last time we did?
These are vinyl?
Vinyl.
Vinyl, right?
All right, there we go. Yeah, no, this, this.
How far out do they stick?
This color was a little off. This color was a little off.
From the, from the building out thirty-six?
What's that, Francis?
I think it's thirty-six.
You mean the length?
Oh, no.
But how does it, how does it, so like, here's the building, how, what, how far out is it coming?
Oh, off the building.
Yeah, off the building, how, how much coverage is there?
But this, this would be.
Cause.
Cause I think it's supposed to cover the sidewalk, I think that's thirty-six.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and, and the rooftop up here, does that also come out or that's a lot closer? That comes out too, so there's almost two. Things covering that.
I'm gonna come in. I'm gonna come in.
It's thirty-six inches. I would say thirty.
They're probably gonna be double, right?
Oh, over here.
It says woven.
Projecting thirty-six.
It's not vinyl, it says construction, it says woven.
And then what's the, well, it says fabric acrylic, it's fine, right?
I guess, I don't know, I guess, but, but what is construction woven, what does that mean?
It's more of a fabric, it's a, it's not vinyl, it's more of a, I like the fabric thing, I think.
Well, it's gotta be.
Almost like this?
Yeah, it's woven, so it doesn't tear it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was.
What, five, eight, five to ten years, look at it?
It's a ten year.
It was supposed to be ten.
Like wind and all that, like wind resistance and everything, so it's not gonna like flap around and all that.
I don't know about this acrylic thing. I think shingles would've been better, but you just put a note on there to keep it, that'll be kept.
Like, yeah, it has to be maintained, that, and that's what, that would be gym, right? If they, if like, say, say one is just a torn down, like say a big thing of snow came from the top and went blowing right through it or something like that, you know what I mean? Like an icicle.
Used to happen all the time in this building.
That's, yeah, that's, so say some, one of them just gets taken out, like, how long does it have to be to before they? Well.
Well, the old overhang was actually metal, that's why I, I was getting a haircut and I, an icicle came out, like, it killed on the bottom.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it's not, it won't be the case, it shouldn't be.
But like, like I said, so say if one of these does get destroyed, like what is the, you know?
Timeframe that they're responsible for.
Yeah. Yeah, because you can always be like, oh, well, my renewals in five years and you just leave it there.
None of this is gonna blend unless you change, you know, it's gonna be lighter than.
Is there a timeframe on maintenance?
That to me looks.
I want it reasonable because assuming it tears, they need to take it off and then they need.
Make a new one.
Is this like the either or on the?
I would say make it reasonable for five to six days, they gotta order it and get it sold.
We can choose now, we have no problem.
I would say, what's sixty, two months, right, that would probably be normal, right? Yeah, because they have that time to fix, you know.
They gotta order it from the fact, yeah.
Yeah, well, when they order these, they, they should see what the timeframe is, right? Like, when they do order these, be like, okay, they, if they say it's two months, well, then we gotta let, you know, we like, right.
Exactly, you're gonna see more like framed edge.
That would also make it less because it's only one instead of one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, we're gonna kinda.
And again, if we make it darker, then we're gonna lose.
No, I like, I, I don't know, I like the colors and everything, I like the sea and everything, kind of like give it a little bit of flavor to it, you know? And then one that here, that is no door, it's a.
We are putting landscape.
Everybody kind of knows. It's very fluid, you know, I mean. Yeah, we got, I mean, we're not having tea over there, are we?
Jeff.
Yeah, I think we're good now, okay. I think, um. All right, Keith, Barb? You're, you're good?
Well, yeah, but, but like, you know, what we're talking about, let's say, let's say a, a thing, a snow, an icicle goes right through it and destroys. Yeah, yeah, well, we, I mean.
Put a condition in, yeah, just like a landscaping condition.
We said, they, they asked for a timeframe, I have no objection, sixty days, that gives you time to order it, get it replaced.
Like, would that be enough for just like one or two at a time, you know what I mean, because?
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good.
And the sixty, sixty days should be fine.
Right, sixty days will give you enough time to get it.
I'm just gonna say, you know, I'm preferring black because it's gonna pick up the windows, that was Mike's point, and I think it'll look nicer than the gray, on the middle, the middle one.
The middle one, isn't it black?
Well, it was, it was either or.
Oh, it's either or, oh, okay.
Oh, the offices one.
So the middle awning is black?
Black.
And what's the color of the side on, the main, the six other ones, what's that color?
It is, uh.
Tan or whatever.
Cream cheese.
Cream cheese. It's Choco Cheese.
Now, Pantone is the C, Pantone are the Cs.
Cheese cake.
There, I know there was something, I didn't, I didn't see it on here. That's Pantone, no, that's the cheese, that's the Choco.
Pantone color forty-six eighty-five C.
Yeah, but that's the, that's the, that's the insignia, that's the Choco Cheese writing.
Uh, here, here's what we're gonna do, as per the lovely plans, sorry, I didn't mean to steal those from you. And, um, these are dated eleven-five twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
I'm gonna mark your copy, I'm stealing your copy, I'm marking this as exhibit A.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is no color.
Okay.
No, but Pantone is the, what I'm looking at, Mike, that's the Choco Cheese insignia.
Insignia.
Yeah, that's what that is, that's.
Parch.
That's the, that's, that's the C.
I think it's called parchment. I think it's called parchment, but we're gonna, we're gonna do exhibit A. Okay.
So black.
Black.
Then we just need the numbers to each of these.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure it's.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the color.
Yes, you look at this color.
See now, does that look the same to you? See, that, that'll probably look better.
Four-seven-two.
That doesn't look the same to me. But this looks like that. More like that.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, four-two-five C.
The applicant has provided an updated landscaping plan in light of our discussion.
Yes.
So I just need comments on that.
Okay, so, let me direct the board.
Can you put it up on the screen?
Yes.
And it's sun umbrella.
So Elizabeth, on your sheet there, they're all called Pantone, but the one that has the little color next to that, that's the Choco Cheese. This, this front page, so they all have the room number, Pantone. You see it?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, so anyway.
I'm just gonna refer to this now and Mike's gonna give me a swatch number.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So they did provide, um, an updated landscaping plan as per our request. There is lower level landscaping in the, um, front, uh, in the side corner outside of the, you'll notice it stops before the turning, um, and they've also identified existing trees located along the southerly property line.
So, um, we've got a mix of low, low shrubs, screened parking in the front. Um, and we put a couple of, um, red maples in the corner here, we can only put a few, like, because we've got overhead holes and wires here. And similar plantings along the side of this section up here. Uh, we took a look at whatever the code requirement was for landscaping, we actually exceeded it by a few. Think it frames the entrance of the site nicely, um, with proper shrubs so that you don't block any site distance for a car pulling out looking left and right. We'll dress up in front of the site nicely.
Thank you, I appreciate you adding that.
Any comments on the landscaping?
No, it looks good.
Satisfied, okay?
Okay, since we are just, um, we'd previously discussed and the two outstanding items were the landscaping and the, um.
Fabric.
Fabric and architecture, okay, I did have a, a draft resolution prepared, um, the conditions that we discussed, and I do have to go back and update it to reflect the plan, so I will type that up more formally, but I did want to go through. Um, applicant to address any and all outstanding comments as set forth in the memos of, of date, Dave Higgins, I don't believe there are any, but I will incorporate his most recent memos, um, as belt and suspenders. Applicant to pay all fee, um, confirmation by the village engineer and planning board attorney, um, and I should be clear that your, the chair is authorized to sign site plan after the following have occurred. Applicant to address all comments, uh, applicant to pay all fees, confirmation by the village engineer and planning board attorney that the final site plan conforms to the terms of this approval res, approval resolution. Applicant to maintain signage indicating that no tractor trailers, um, and I think, what did we say, um, in excess of? What was it that, it was?
Box trucks, SU forties.
That's the color?
That's general ASH designation for a box truck.
Um, cannot enter into the site, failure to restrict such traffic may result in a violation of site plan approval or revocation of occupancy. Um, I encourage, having had, had this happen in another municipality, um, regardless of who owns the site, whether it's the tenant's responsibility, the trucker's responsibility, or the property owner's responsibility, ultimately the property owner will be responsible. Should the, um, should there be an issue? All right, um, the signage, and again, I'm typing here as we go, signage to reflect logo as presented uh, on the, on the architectural renderings. Any further signage would need, um, approval in six A.
Don't forget the additional signage with no trailers entering the site.
That was, that was the one before.
Okay.
Um, any additional signage to be approved per code. Landscaping, I'm just gonna say landscaping as per plan and I will, um, include the date. Like, um, of course landscaping to be maintained in perpetuity, all right, um. For architectural review, again, exhibit, we're gonna have the exhibit A as presented. And that's the signs and then we have the shades of, which I will put in there. This stucco hasn't changed, it's the same as originally presented, I will include, I will. Uh, there's no new lighting other than what's already existing on the existing building. Applicant to obtain all the permits pursuant to two hundred dash seventy-two F, this approval shall expire within one year if work is not commenced. Is there anything I'm missing?
Did you add the, um, sixty day?
Uh, yeah, I can add that, any additional signage we have, uh, awnings, um, to be maintained in the event awnings tear or otherwise damaged property owner to replace within sixty days. Anything else?
I think that's everything.
And just to be clear, this is a type-two action under secret, um, because it's less than, um, four thousand horsepower of additional space. Um, all that is sort of typed in memo, I will go clean it up and circulate it, um, later this week, uh, but is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve it, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, and then you'll circulate it?
I'll circulate the final.
So we can review it?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Rather move forward.
Berto? And second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay?
Certainly, uh, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays, happy new year, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night and soon.
Terry, mark this exhibit A, we're gonna attach it, and Jeff, when you sign, you're gonna sign this as well.
Yeah.
Okay?
Gotta attach that to the permit.
To the site plan, the site.
Yeah.
And you, you, you put the landscape in perpetuity, right, on there?
It's like in my template, I don't even need to type that out.
Just making sure, just making sure, I didn't hear it.
But the landscaping plan should be there too.
So that's baked into the, that's baked into the site plan?
It is, yeah.
That's separate apart from the site plan, so we can.
Fair enough.
Yeah, one of those, so it goes well. Okay, um, okay.
Yes.
Okay, before, before we move to the next one, Jeff.
Yes.
You know, the issue with the tractor trailers crossing seventeen hours, it's happening in two or three spots.
But that's not our.
We can't go to, we can't.
You can, you can send a message to the village board.
As we have.
No, we can do that.
We did this.
As it comes before us, we can make those, gotta have signage, gotta do this, gotta do that, you can make correctives, but other than that, if you see it happening somewhere, that's, that's not us.
So, so maybe when the ones we're talking about come back.
Yeah.
And can the five-year period then really?
Right, yeah, all right, so next up is two oh eight.
You think they're ever gonna come back in front of you? Be serious.
Hi Kirk, how are you?
And there's, there's at least two in the town, two in the town.
What are we on?
And do me a favor.
This is two oh eight.
If you begin to speak of something, just spell your last name for the, the recording for them.
Thank you.
Pretty easy. Two this way, Paul.
He's, he, he failed kindergarten.
I might have an extra one.
That'd be great. Good evening, Kirk Rother, R O T H E R, civil engineer for two oh eight business center, with me is John Dolgren, and a representative from Charlie Gottlieb's office, the project attorney. I'm sure you're all quite familiar with this project by now, we had submitted a DEIS, got comments, uh, submitted a draft FEIS. As a part of the, uh, really the DEIS process, uh, some of the most significant concerns brought up by the adjourners were the YMCA folks on the, I guess it's the west side of the property. Uh, we met with them, we discussed alternatives, their primary concern was the proximity of the loading docks and the access road to a playground that's just a few feet off the property, where I believe it's a special needs school that occupies the facility. Uh, so like I said, we met with Tom Ali, who's an engineer that's also involved in the YMCA and the CEO, discussed some options, prepared some sketches, and some of those options at the time involved possibly relocating the playground on their property into a few different locations, obviously at our expense. Those were incorporated into our first round of the FEIS that the board had reviewed, and I guess the YMCA wasn't too happy with that because they really hadn't had a chance to do a review and sign off on it, and that really wasn't, you know, we weren't trying to circumvent anything, but it happened. So we took a step back and we figured, you know, well, they brought up some concerns that, yes, these were the concepts we talked about, but it's gonna involve impacts to their property, affect future use of their property, affect future parking, who's gonna pay for it, the, the semantics of the approvals and things like that. So we took a step back and said, how can we try to mitigate this impact, uh, on our own without having to involve the YMCA in cross, cross agreements? So that is what we have here in front of you tonight, uh, on this highlight that I gave you. I put the two site plans side by side.
So Kirk, why don't you highlight the differences?
I, I, yeah, I will, that's really everything you see highlighted here with.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, old is on the right, new is on the left. Okay, yeah, old is on the right, new is on the left.
I, I literally highlighted the differences.
Cause I can't read anything.
With a legend on the side here to tell you.
Can't read much of it.
But it is.
It is, it's pretty small, yeah.
Areas got larger, areas got smaller.
So really, I'll hold it up here, so. Y M C A, the playground area we're talking about is over here. This is the old, old plan, our loading docks were very close, they were concerned about noise, vibration, odor, uh danger. We had proposed in our, our initial response to that, we had proposed putting a barrier wall here, limiting hours of, of operation. They still had concerns, understandably so. So. We reconfigured this whole portion of the site, everything between the building and Gilbert Street is basically identical. Uh, you can see we took the loading docks and we moved them around two hundred feet away from the Y M C A. Changed the shape of the building, so these loading docks are now in a kind of an enclosed nook. Uh, in doing that, we're also able to widen our landscaping areas a little bit, this, the greenery between the Y M C A property and us used to be. And our edge of pavement, it used to be around five feet, now we've doubled that to ten. So everything on this plan, the pink is obvious, that's the relocated loading docks. Anything I have in green, if you can read my chicken scratch here. The space got larger than what was on the prior plan, the original plan. Anything in orange, which is just this area behind the gas station. And this little stretch here, it's adjacent to the Y M C A, this actually a rock outcrop, those areas got a little bit narrower.
So what was the orange area, what was in the orange area that got smaller?
It's just open, it's just the shape of the parking lot.
Oh, so that's, okay.
Was used to be angled, you know, and by us straightening it out because we now made the, the building follow the angle of the side of the property line. So actually, you see there's our property line, our setback, we angled this building to follow the setback. And so rather than here, we have kind of a wide space and a very narrow space, the space is.
Okay, I see.
Are you still gonna put some kind of soundproofing alongside there?
Yeah.
Because they're, they're sound sensitive.
So has the Y, out of curiosity, seen this?
I submitted it to them, we didn't get a response back.
Okay, when did you submit it?
Around over a month ago now.
Okay, and no responsible? You're sure they got it though?
I'm sure.
Okay.
We let them know that this is, you know, so actually before we even presented it, we had a, a Zoom call with your consultants too. We're over here tonight. Before we had even had that, we sent it to the Y M C A to say, listen. This is where we're headed with this, we'd like your feedback, two weeks went by, we didn't get a response. So, uh, you know, our clients are like, listen, we can't wait forever, just keep going. So then we submitted it to, I actually wasn't on the Zoom call because I had a conflict with John was on it, I believe Elizabeth, you were on it.
Yeah.
Your consultants were on it, I believe the, the general consensus was it's an improvement. And um. That's it, so we're here tonight to just show it to you, get your initial feedback. Before we go through and fully reengineer and everything and formally roll it into the F E I S. Which, I don't know, John and Elizabeth, do you have any questions on how this gets incorporated into the F E I S? It's not really my belly weight, I'm just the lowly engineer.
I do have a question Kirk, the, what, I couldn't read if it is on here, but what are, what are the dimensions of the new loading area there?
Uh. We might make them, it's four loading stalls.
Okay.
Same as what was.
That's pretty big, yeah.
And, and just offhand, rough number, the distance.
So maybe we want fifty roughly, is that correct?
All right, and then the distance to the property line, to where it worked, to where it's gonna end now, like trucks have plenty of room, I'm guessing.
Yes, so I mean, uh, standard dimension for a tractor trailer trucks and then we were going to, that's a hundred and thirty feet.
Okay.
We have that.
The rock cropping, is that gonna be blasted?
Potentially.
Then how would you be able to do that without? You know, that's very loud.
So that's in the F E I S, John, you can speak to that, I believe there was a whole blasting plan, there'd be notifications given to the school, we would only do it on the weekend, there'd be vibration monitoring.
And they have, there is a code, uh, we have a whole chapter in our code for um. Requirements and pre-blasting surveys and things, things like that, so there is a provision in our code, it is an impact that the applicant does have to address in the F E I S. Um, but yes, we are aware because I think regardless of this change, there was gonna be blasting with both the old version and new version.
Right.
So um.
Not a lot, we're not.
Not a lot.
You know what blasting, believe it or not, is probably less of an impact than if they were a hammer for a week.
So the areas you're saying are getting larger and smaller, is that just the buffers or is that the actual parking lot?
No, it's just landscape areas around the.
Landscape areas got a little bigger and, okay, yeah, yeah, so the parking lot itself stayed pretty much the same, right?
Is that pointer that uh?
Right up here, yeah, he, he left with that, he left with that one, that's his. Gotta up your game.
So this, this is all, this is when we configured, this got wider. Uh, this got wider, over here is a little narrower because our old plan had this, this. This area, we configured a little dumpster moved from here to here. This area changed with the two, actually we have landscaping in here, which we did before this, despite the models. And so this got a little narrower. This got wider.
Yeah, okay.
And there's no issues Kirk with that, those parking spots where the loading dock is, trucks getting in and out of there, like.
Nothing, these guys gotta be good.
And then you got people, is that employee parking or is that gonna be customer parking? Because if it is, and you got people walking through there and trucks.
Well, I would note, one plan set, the site plan set that we got from the applicant doesn't show those two parking spaces. And the plan set attached to Charlie's letter shows those two parking spaces.
You still there?
Yeah.
I'll have to look into that.
I didn't think you needed it based on your parking count, so.
But I'm thinking of the parking spots straight out of the, out of the loading docks, you straight across? Yes, because if you've got people coming out of wherever the entrances are, and it's gonna be a supermarket, right? So they're walking with carriages.
Is that the back of the building?
They're not likely gonna.
Right, so, so we're assuming that, so is that more employee parking?
Is it overflow, yeah, employee or?
I mean, I'd feel better if it's not people like this, just say, I only park here, and they don't know where they're going, trucks are coming through.
Well, you have to walk all around the building as well as the entrance, so most people, it's given their last option, I would assume.
Yeah.
And we're not anticipating high truck generation right here, we're gonna hear, you know, a couple trucks a day.
And usually what time are deliveries, are they before the, the store opens or after or during?
Oh, usually not so much, early in the day or.
Yeah, cause I think that's what most things do, cause when you go to Stop and Shop, whatever, and you see the trucks going in the back and stuff, you know.
And those trucks now, Kirk, they've come in over there.
I, we've made all these radiuses.
Yep.
Really large, so now with this being the latest, and see that dimension there, that's the hundred and thirty.
To the park, to the front of the parking spot.
To the front of the parking spot, that is enough space for, for the four trucks to drive. So these radiuses is all big enough now, the truck will come in here, do this, back end, pull out, and then we're gonna drop.
It doesn't, yeah.
You'll, you'll have them, the trucks go back out the main entrance instead of circling around the building, that's a nice idea.
Yeah.
I mean, all of these radiuses now, this, this radius got bigger, uh, this greenery there wasn't, wasn't on the part of that. But these radiuses, this is all big enough for the truck to move.
Still two-way road.
Yeah, maybe it'd be much better if the trucks didn't have to come across the front of that.
Yeah.
Where you, you enter in the building.
You know, if you just take a look at all the parking spaces you have, parking spaces seem to be an issue tonight. But all the parking spaces you have, are you plus? Parking spaces for this size building?
On the money.
You're on the money.
Two fifty-nine required, guess how many provide?
Of course, my question there.
Joe's coming up there to count them, you know.
The follow-up would be very easy, I mean, that whole line of parking across the back, you know, fifteen to twenty spaces.
Joe, maybe so you don't have to go up there and do it, you could ask them if they'll number them.
The what?
You could ask them to number them so you don't have to count them.
So actually, I don't have the number, but I do have the number of spaces in each back.
But you see what I'm saying?
I do.
If you had pluses, you can get rid of those, you can get rid of any dangerous situations with people walking to the back of the building. Because there's an, there's a entrance in the back of the building.
Is that an employee entrance or like a, like a?
These are the entrances here, they're, 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 this is the main entrance.
Okay.
This is gonna be uh, dumpster.
So there's only four entrances?
Three, three you're showing, right?
One, two, three, four.
So was it the corner up there, that, that top one, where's the one in the back, right?
There was one in the back in the old.
So there's no back back where the?
There, I don't have a new floor, but it's, so I'm not gonna say for sure there's gonna be any entrance. But this old part of the building is clearly where your grocery store. And the entrance to that is.
So they'd come in and out of there.
There will not be any pedestrian entrance, definitely.
Right, okay.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, yeah, I mean, basically, yeah, there was gonna be parking in front of the.
And then here you have dumpster, so there won't be any transfer here, there's probably a rule just be limited to the side.
I mean, you rarely go.
So is there a, a, you know, since you do have the radiuses, can we say that they can only go the one way in and out, the trucks? Cause I think that would, that would be much better.
Kind of question, so now the truck is ready, it's already unloaded, it's in a lead rate, it's gonna go right, it's gonna come down, take a lap down.
Yeah.
So obviously cars, trucks are gonna come in, it, it's gonna be a bit of a weird tight spot, you know, you know, obviously, there's a, there's an angle away the truck comes out. Right, if you're pulling in this canal, you're kind of getting backed in, you know, if there's a bit of a backup, the cars potentially be onto a way. Is there any thought or possibility where the exit can only go out where those maybe nine spots are as an exit for the tractor trailer? Or is that in any sense whatsoever?
Here.
Yes.
There is no way.
Okay.
To allow us to.
Okay. I just, I'm looking at how that could be a little, you guys see the cars are coming in and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I just, it was a thought that I thought maybe, but I understand, you know, just to mitigate that potential.
I mean, if you have a tractor trailer that's maneuvering through those lanes, you're gonna cross a little.
Of course, yes. Yeah. You can widen, maybe widen it or something, but I don't think you really have room for it.
So you already have, your code, the corners are always interior lanes at twenty-six feet, which is wider than. And so we think this is a significant improvement, particularly with regards to the impact of the Y M C A, here's their plan.
Right.
See it's, right, so our loading dock.
Right, and, and you put a buffer of like on the building itself, that's, that's uh, greenery, I'm guessing all the way around, that's landscape?
No, this was only around five feet before, it's ten feet now, we'll still put a wall, a fence around it.
Okay.
The solid stockade fence, which legally was eight feet high.
And no openings?
No.
Yeah.
So if you're generally agreeable with this and you say, right on, you're on the right track, keep going, we'll keep going. That's really all we can get out of it.
So you look sorry.
This is called the warm.
I think that was very.
The warm and fuzzy, the warm and fuzzy, as I missed.
I mean, I like this plan better than the other one, I think it, it mitigates. Uh, I'd sure like to know, you, just for the sake of knowing, why they didn't, they didn't respond to it, because they were so wanting to be engaged in it. Yeah, so, I saw a number of them, but I understand things recent.
I'm really not too worried about the spots in the back right there, cause I mean, how many places you go that all the parking is maxed out, you know what I mean?
That was the um, the supermarket is really to the left. And there's no way to get out of it back there.
Yeah, so people, it's not gonna lead customers to park back there because.
It'd be good to say the trucks can only come in and go out that.
Yeah, yeah.
That way, so they're not coming around the front where we got people walking and kids running.
Yeah, oh no, absolutely, yeah.
And on the other hand, how much more space do we need in this village? Got a ton of office space now in this village already. A lot of it vacant. Why does this have to be built, built out right here, right now? It's a grocery store, yeah. Yeah, but there's.
It's like their second story.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's on top.
And hopefully that's all office.
And it's actually one of the parts.
Correct, is it the front, no, on that?
Twenty-five thousand square feet.
On the right side of the, the plan?
The ones on the top.
Yeah.
Perfect every time.
Is that outside or?
That's pretty cool how you did that.
That was.
Is that additional space or, or office space for the grocery store?
That would be office space available to anybody that wants it.
That's, that's where the parking space is.
Yeah.
That's where the back ones are coming.
Actually, when details are higher, more expensive.
Yes.
You do that every time.
She's got that timer perfect.
It happened to, Mike.
Right, perfect timing.
It happened to him three times.
Yeah.
Parking spots, obviously, and I, and you remember, they included all the office space and the.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, the reason why the second floor is office space and not additional detail is because based on the parking cap ratio.
You don't have enough, yeah.
Okay. Um, how does the board, just by a poll, feel about the plan?
I like it better than the other one, yeah, absolutely.
For the sake of Y too.
Yeah, well, that, I think that, you've done nicely with the, the conditions on the Y and the C E C center.
Yes, yes.
So at this point, um, we, the consultants did speak with the applicant and their consultants. I, Kirk can take that for what, that poll for what it is, I'd take it that it's the warm and fuzzy he wants. Um, he's going to treat this as an, they're gonna treat this as an alter, a new alternative in their F E I S. Um, and, and essentially as a response to, to comments. And I just, I didn't go heavily in depth into, and Natalie, you'll notice that Natalie didn't prepare a memo because we had a discussion, what was the point of prepping a memo on? The purpose of today, which was just, you know, get a sense. Um, I just, uh, for the record, um, the applicant still has to address the consultant comments from the May twenty, the May twenty twenty-four draft of the F E I S. The applicant has those comments um at the July eighth meeting. Um, I believe you guys are gonna take first steps at the um finding statement for us to review and you were gonna draft, make the initial draft of that as well um for us. Uh, and then just the carryover that I, the two um comments that I had. Or three comments that I carried over for my memo, just for the record. Um, the applicant is reminded that the timing of traffic improvements must be clearly set forth in the F E I S. And any resulting approval document of the planning board, road improvements must be made prior to the start of construction on site. We did discuss appropriate phasing of pavement, but that the overall construction should be pretty far along before building permits. And then the revised plans, your turning radius for W forty and S U trucks, in addition, there's been discussion held regarding limiting the size of trucks entering the site. Uh, the F E I S should address how it will limit uh truck size and we can continue that discussion based on the amendments. Um, and then of course I defer to Kimberly Horn on the adequacy of those maneuverability plans. Landscaping, in its prior submission, the applicant sought to install fewer trees than required in the one-to-one replacement ratios set forth in two hundred dash thirty-two of the village code. Of course, the applicant to address under the newly proposed alternative, it sounds like there's more room for landscaping, so that might, request might be a little lower because you now have more room um in the buffers. So those were my comments.
Yes, just as, of course, the board's concerned with regards to the tree planting. Do you remember how long it was short? The board showed about forty, uh, twenty-four. We have our landscape architect, it's Steve Viscini, we've asked Steve to shoot more trees if he possibly can on some of that which he has. Not on this newest plan yet, but. But we're not necessarily looking for the board to give us more from packing them, we've discussed maybe planting them at a local occasion, which one of the. Of course, we've identified maybe an airplane park that seems pretty barren. I drive by.
We can, we can certainly, we can certainly discuss, we can certainly discuss that and I, I do remember that discussion came up.
My yard can use a couple.
So, um, we don't, there's no formal action on our part, I think, uh, Mr. Rother has the sense he needs from the board and the applicants can take that sense and proceed accordingly.
Were we able to traffic circle there?
Yeah, the traffic study and everything.
That's still, that's the. That's, no, that's, that's, that has to be dealt with.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah. You heard it right there.
But they.
So that's all, go ahead.
Even on the village board level, if you recall, we had lots of the village board. That's a wish and that.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, that lights and failure as it is.
How many retail stores are gonna be on the bottom level?
I don't know.
It is.
The footprint's forty-seven thousand square feet. Numbers I recall seeing over the course of this project was at the grocery, it was about thirty thousand of that.
Cause you have four entrances, it looks like two are probably for the uh, supermarket, and it looks like you maybe have two other buildings.
Unit.
Yeah.
Two other retail stores on the bottom level.
Yeah, I think we are. If I recall, actually, the plans were in the EDIS four plan of the building. But I think there is an interior hallway.
What you're saying, the, of the forty-six thousand square feet on the bottom floor, thirty-eight thousand is for the supermarket?
I think, I wanna say thirty-four thousand is what I recall.
Rough numbers, thirty-five thousand out of forty-five thousand, so you got ten thousand.
Thousand or less than.
Twelve thousand.
I think that was chopped up into like two thousand square foot spaces.
So six. So like six more?
Yeah.
We will definitely include a revised four.
Right.
Because there's only two entrances, like you said, internal hallway to the other uh, six retail stores. Let's just say six, you know, two thousand square foot, twelve thousand remaining.
And on that plan, there was uh, about even that space for the hallway was, it was like two-story high, so if you're upstairs in the offices, you're like down. It's like a.
Okay. Yep, okay.
Sounds good, good night, Kurt.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
All right.
I feel so bad.
There was one thing that you said he was gonna address, I forgot.
But if she wasn't here, we'd want the answer to something.
What was the one thing that you said that he was gonna maybe address, but then I forgot, we?
John, yes, but I think Liz kinda answered, we were wondering how do we roll this into the FDIS?
Okay.
And this will, this is another alternate.
Okay.
Right.
And that's exactly how Seeker's supposed to function. This is actually how Seeker is supposed to work and be an evolution over time. Not just, here's my project, uh, we're, give us, give us this project, it's an evolution.
No, absolutely. All right. Part of the FDIS, we will compare the old plan and the new plan, and you know, dimensions, that sort of thing. Number of spaces to a comparison.
We already, I think we already have that, we have a a consistency table.
There's this table here.
And that's gonna go in the document.
Just state your name for record.
I don't know how, but this plan somehow has eight hundred square feet less than per piece area.
Yeah. All right.
You participated, that's it. It was worth it.
It was worth it now.
So you go back, tell Charlie we gave you such a hard time.
I know, I know.
Tell him you had to fight.
Yes, very good.
Safe drive home.
Okay. All right, so three eighty-six Route seventeen M?
Oh, we only have one left, then, right? Oh, thank God. Well, like we said, here we called them out.
Anybody here for three eighty-six?
Gilbert Street, anybody coming for Gilbert Street? We pet, okay, that was second.
Yeah, we called you earlier. Okay, so, all right, so three eighty-six is one here. Okay, all right, yeah, come on up.
Twelve o'clock at night.
So Scott, do you have anything on uh, from Dave for fifty-nine Gilbert?
Oh, you switched up one.
I'm all out of order here.
And if you just would just uh, step up to the mic and just uh, tell us who you're, how you're connected to it, just for the, and spell your last name.
Irish Turn Global Fire Prevention, Vice President of Global Fire Prevention, connected to property, I, I'm one of the owners of the property. And we're seeking to build another building in the back for additional storage. Um, last time we came out, he sent us back to the, to the inspector for a definition about loading under two hundred feet. Um, he sent uh, he sent us back a definition.
Okay.
And let's see what board has to say.
Okay.
But you see that the building inspector did uh, provide a letter um, about the loading area, noting that uh, planning board has questioned the existing loading area for the existing building used in the warehouse slash office. The original signed site plan dated nine fifteen nineteen ninety-seven was approved for warehousing slash office and followed the code of the Village of Monroe dated nineteen sixty-eight. This code cycle did not have the requirement of the two hundred foot setback from residential districts. Existing loading area would be considered pre-existing, not conforming, and would be permitted to remain and be used as it was designated for.
Right, but the additional building, which Jay, he didn't, he didn't answer the question in that.
No, we asked him the question that we are using the original building for loading, and the other building is just, if this fills up, to over, to put everything to the other building on that.
So you're not having a loading zone.
Yes, so that's, he answered on that.
There you go. So there's only one loading zone?
One loading zone.
Where do you use a forklift going back and forth?
Yeah, just a forklift, and also, most of our stuff comes with FedEx and UPS. All of the, our sprinkler heads are in small boxes, and they they come just with um, they can come twenty boxes in a, in a shop. Uh, the loading is once in a while.
So you don't have large tractor trailers trying to go?
Sometimes we get large, because FedEx is sending freight, they're gonna send the pallet, they're gonna send a large tractor trailer, we're gonna unload it to the old one. And if it overloads, then we gotta go to the other one and fill it up. But most of our stuff all day, if you guys are around, you're gonna see FedEx and UPS, also not crazy, we don't have all day shipping. I don't even have anybody in the building, they have to call a bell, and somebody comes out to them once in a while when we have something come.
So it can currently hold or 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 take the tractor trail?
Yes.
Can currently, okay.
So Elizabeth, um, do you have comments?
I do.
Okay, then I have a few after that.
So, um, my last memo on this was October ninth, twenty twenty-four. Um, the application is subject to GML two thirty-nine due to its proximity to Route seventeen M and the town boundary. Uh, referral to Orange County Plan, Planning Town on the Road. Public hearing is required, um, I had misspoken, I believe this is a a special use permit as well, so a public hearing is required. Uh, Seeker, this is an unlisted action, um, given the, um. Should I carry over? Site need of variance? That might be a care, uh, yes, it does. Um, we do need an area variance, I'm recommending a coordinated review. Um, the two variances are um, lot size eighty square feet versus sixty thousand three hundred fifty-four square feet, and then the accessory structure is larger than the principal structure. Um, when we were last, our last set of comments, there were requested changes to the EAF. Those, an applicant, the applicant has submitted a revised EAF. Um, there's still some significant outstanding issues, uh, planning board to consider and address traffic, that was not, uh, we didn't receive any submissions as to that. Applicant to address signage, applicant to address architectural review. Um, applicant must identify any constrained lands on site plan, see local law four of twenty twenty-four. Um, I know FEMA, I know plan set shows FEMA floodplain and steep slopes located on a portion of the site, floodplains are to be deducted as set forth in two hundred dash twenty point one. Applicant to provide appropriate calculation on the plan. Uh, we just talked about the um. The loading zone, app, planning board to address landscaping, um, I did not see any on the um, site plan. Uh, and the board should be aware, I have been notified that Building Department that the site is the subject of notice of violation for unpermitted construction. The applicant has been directed to apply for and obtain approval from the planning board. The applicant was directed by the planning board to process the application in good faith. I note that despite several comments from Dave Higgins and myself at the October meeting, the applicant has only, has addressed only the SEAF and no further revisions have been made.
Plan, since. Did gave in the last, when I came, the the board told me that they're not gonna look at anything before I give an EAF an update. And that was given in, that's a revised one. It was not, I saw.
Cause my comments were on the plan set, the last plan set we have from you is dated, one second. So the last plan set we have. Was dated. I have an August plan set that was the subject of review of my Octo, my October letter. We didn't receive any plans since then, or at least my office is not.
I'll check again, I was wondering, when I gave in the EAF, the secretary asked me for it, and I was like, I remember giving it, but I'll check again.
So the last plan set I have on file, um, at least that has been uploaded to the OneDrive, is August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. That's the last plan. So all we have is the revised EAF. I believe when you first applied, the, we advised that you needed an EAF for us to consider the application complete to process it, because I think when you first submitted, we didn't have an EAF.
Okay, because we got like a whole list from sixteen comments on the old one, and on that comments, we gave a new, we gave it a new plan.
I don't have it then, because I didn't review it.
We don't, I don't.
Slipped through.
We don't, yeah, we didn't have it.
The only thing that I think that we saw, that I saw that was submitted was the.
Revised EAF.
Revised EAF, and then the letter that we got in.
From Joe. Yeah, that was it.
The last part I didn't even wanna look at, it could be. It's looked through somewhere, but definitely I didn't make a new one.
Did you submit?
No, I think also, if I'm not mistaken, um, one of our enforcement people shared an email several times to you. The the information that needed to be brought before the board. Um, one of them was dated ten sixteen, one of them was dated eleven eighteen.
So at this point, what I'm, so here's what I'm prepared to do tonight. Um, obviously, my comments and Dave's comments still need to be addressed, and there's some fairly significant comments in terms of. Site and everything else, we can declare our intent to be lead agency, um, because we do have a short form envi, a completed short form environmental assessment form.
Mm-hmm.
And and start our thirty days, because we still have to circulate it, we can start our thirty days. Um, and it would then have to go to the ZBA for those two variances. And they're gonna do what they did for one twenty-five Elm Street, which is they're gonna have an initial discussion, and then they're just gonna say, come finish your seeker.
Right. Okay.
That or. Excuse me. Um. We could do an uncoordinated review.
Well, it's gonna be.
Bigger than. Kelly's gonna wanna coordinate it. We could also do an uncoordinated review where we, but then the Z, then we're doing seeker twice.
No. Do a coordinated review.
Okay. It's, I don't think it's a type two, even if you separate it out. Sometimes, like minimal area variances are type twos, and the ZBA can give their determination first, but it's more than that, because this, the accessory is larger than the principal, so it's not.
Okay, so we should declare a tentative, we we we, and see what goes from there.
All right, so I do have a resolution, um. Normally, I'd ask Dave if you think the existing plan is sufficient far enough along.
That's the plan they got right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two building, just the one in front and one in the back, is that what they?
The one in the back, a temporary building?
Asking him for changes.
That's temporary?
Uh, how?
Here, use the pointer. Can you use the pointer right there?
Yeah, sure.
There you go.
Yeah, that's the.
That one, yeah.
One, but it's interesting, you should have all of the note as well. Existing and ready, this is just like a, a cover up on the on the stuff that we have, we don't wanna keep it as public, environment, so we didn't like the.
Will that come down when you put up your new building?
Of course, of course. This is just now, it shouldn't get room to stop.
No.
You didn't wanna leave it, it just gets room for all the stuff. It's flat park, and it's getting, I was just gonna check to do a given screening. And also keeps the whole lot more clean.
So, um, referring with Scott, I think what we're gonna do is normally I would do an intent to declare a lead agency plus a two thirty-nine. Since the applicant is indicating that there are revised plans, I'm gonna wait on holding off, I'll wait on the two thirty-nine. Um.
Get the revised plan first before we do anything.
Well, you can't send it without the revised plan.
Yeah.
Done.
I mean, I can send this, but it's not worse, it's not worse, because there should be changes.
It doesn't. This is, I remember that, right, it came back with a lot of comments, and he addressed most of the comments, it's interesting that I don't see it on, it's not here.
Are you expecting Mike to submit it directly, or are you submitting it? Is Mike giving it to you for you to submit?
Yeah, he's giving it to me to see that. Oh, he's CC, um, did you? Pushed in in the back. The old, the new building, you're not even, hardly gonna see it from the front, from the road. So all the way pushed in in the back, if you're gonna drive through, you're hardly gonna see it, if we put in greenery, there's no way you can see it from the road. It's all the way.
Where the temporary one is?
I can see a temporary from the road. So, so with that going where the temporary is.
Where's the new building gonna be?
In the back.
Where the temporary is?
Right, with the temporary.
Yes, but if we put some greenery up.
Where the temporary is?
No, before you're going up, it's like a little, it's a second lot.
Yeah, it's got big space between it.
Put some greenery, there's no way.
Okay, but you, you have to put the greenery on the site plan, because it's not on the plan.
Sure, so if you put a little over here, if you're gonna put greenery right here and right here, the look from passing on Village Street. This is gonna be very, it's very hard, you're gonna be able to see it, because there's a lot of greenery here. So all we're gonna have is, is over here, there's, this is only a roll up, so if we fill it up over here with greenery, this, it'll be hard, you should be able to see from the road here.
Does this a butt chase bank?
No.
No, this is the next building.
A lot, a lot away.
Of one mile away?
Yeah, the one that has like a little.
It was the proximity to that, is there a house, a vector somewhere, or not really?
Irish cottage type.
I thought there was a house on the left side.
Well, they, they has a built, a business.
Yeah, I think it's a. Business, so, yeah, a couple of businesses.
Yeah, there's daycare, Maggie's.
So it's not residential, it's a business, it's commercial.
Yeah, so it looks like, so we don't have the revised plan.
No.
No.
We don't have any, so we can't even do anything with it.
Don't do anything.
So I will check where it's looked through the crack, because I remember bringing it.
Good night.
According to all the, all the the comments, everything was checked out, so I don't know where it, it looked away. So I will, I will get it to the board as possible.
So the submission date, the submission date for um, next month is um, the thirtieth.
Okay. So I will actually, those is just getting in, and I will be. So I will actually, those is just getting in, and I will be working.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Yeah, good night.
Okay, thank you. Happy holidays.
Who's here still? Who's here? So real quick, Jeff, for the people that are coming from Albany, can we maybe, if we know they're coming, maybe put them first on the agenda, so they don't have to leave at like nine o'clock?
We had no idea they were coming.
Yeah, 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 I don't know, I don't.
I tell you what, we thought, we thought Kirk was coming, and just to give us, he was looking for, is, are you guys okay if we move in this direction?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I was actually surprised they came all the way down.
Well, yeah, I mean, like, I just think maybe if we can consider, that's all, I mean, that would be. They're not getting home till eleven now. Yeah, and if we started them at seven, they'd get home by now, you know?
I always wanted to use this.
Order, order.
Um, we, did, do we have a representative from three eighty-six?
No.
Okay, so let's just, and I'm doing this, I'm gonna sound very lawyerly, and Fred will know what I'm talking about. Let the record reflect that it's nine fifteen, and we do not have an applicant here for, on behalf of.
Three eighty-six.
Three eighty-six.
Route seventeen.
Route seventeen, and I'd like that in the minutes, please, and the reason I'd like that in the minutes is, he's in front of Judge Strauss on Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
He's here because he's got a notice of why, and he's in court, so.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay.
Was supposed to show up. When the judge says, why didn't the planning board approve this, I'd like it in the minutes to reflect that the applicant wasn't here.
Yeah.
Oh, good idea.
And it's nine fifteen.
What's the, what's, what's the name of the place?
It's three eighty-six Route seven.
Is that motion?
Yes.
But like, even if we see them show up, and then, you know, if we have them last or whatever, we could just be like, hey, listen, can we just switch this? I mean, it just makes sense. Yeah, I mean, that's, geez. Minutes, let's go.
All right, minutes, who was not here for that meeting? So Keith, you are abstaining?
Abstain.
So does someone wanna make a motion to, or approve the minutes?
Or which one?
Um.
Last month, right?
Yes.
November?
It's the only one, there's only one on here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so for the November.
Yeah.
Meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Remember Anucci, second?
Second.
Remember Kelly? All in favor? And one abstention is.
Abstain.